Claire Abrams, would you please take the role?
Mr. Conway.
Yeah.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikewich.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Welcome tonight to the Subcommittee on Community Partnerships. And what we're going to do is just give a brief update on three of the partnerships, and then we'll go right into the fourth partnership, which we will be talking into detail. And we have some honored guests here tonight that will be joining in discussion. The first one I wanted to bring the public up to speed on was the partnership that we had on distracted driving program that was at the high school. And it was sponsored by the Massachusetts Bar Association. And it was an excellent opportunity for our students as seniors to see firsthand how very important it is to be paying attention when you're driving and not being distracted. And we were fortunate enough to have two attorneys that came and spoke at this event. And one of them being Attorney Elizabeth Conway, another one Attorney Tim Kelleher. This is a partnership that is going to continue. They said that they would come back. And at that particular time, we met just with the seniors. We're going to also figure out a way to expand that to the entire high school. And in that particular partnership, I want to give a special thanks to Kim Scott and also to Kristin Ross Sikewich, because they were very instrumental in helping to put that particular partnership together. So again, I thank my colleagues very much for that. And also, I just want to thank all my colleagues in total for all these partnerships, because if it wasn't for them, for their support, they wouldn't be going forward. The second partnership, I just want to mention very briefly. We've talked about it before. It's something that actually kind of was spawned out of the sports-themed schools. And we've talked about that. And it's now woven into the curriculum at the younger grades. And we started off with three sports. We started off with field hockey, tennis, and also wrestling. And I think that these are sports that need to feed the system. And we're fortunate enough that Coach Jennifer Carey brought the U.S. Tennis Association forward. This was kind of a combination for, in the last few years, with also Coach Dennis Kuziak. And Jennifer Carey put this together. And because of this partnership, there will be 450 tennis rackets that will be distributed throughout the entire school system with all the supplies that goes along with it. And we're also going to have some special training for our phys ed teachers that will certainly help us out in this area. So again, I congratulate the staff on that. And I also want to point out a couple of my colleagues that were very instrumental in this and supported it right from the very beginning, Mr. Jim Leary and Mr. Bob Gignac. And I thank them very much, because once again, here's a sports program that is going to be introduced to all our students throughout the entire district. And the third one is a program, a partnership, that we're in the process of developing right now with NASA. And we're very fortunate to have an astronaut who just happens to be my nephew, Christopher Cassidy, and he just came back from the space station. And he has told us that he would come here to Lowell, where actually where his father had his roots from. And he'd love to sit down and talk with our students. So I want to thank Senator Eileen Donahue in regards to this. And I also want to thank former Senator Steve Pangiotakis, because the three of us went up to speak with Marty Meehan and his staff. And he is going to help to put this particular event together. And it's something that I think is going to certainly help our students and also the surrounding towns will be also invited. And the initial idea was to have an event at the Songus Arena with a number of other events. We will have the university, Middlesex Community College, and the Lowell Public School System combined with an incredible combination as a partners. So again, these are some of the things that we're looking forward with our partnerships. And the next one, I think we're all very excited about this, and that's what really has brought us here tonight. And that is, the fourth one would be the Director of Grants and Partnerships. First of all, I want to thank, I want to thank three individuals that were extremely instrumental in making this work. And if they were not at the table, it wouldn't have progressed as far as it has. And again, I want to thank them very much, because they've been extremely helpful. Anytime I've ever asked them to, or the school system has ever asked them to step up to the plate and help us out, they've always been there. And that's what I call true partnerships. And that's why partnerships in the city are so very important. George Duncan, he's not able to be with us here tonight, but he sends his best. George Duncan, the founder and the chairman of the Enterprise Bank. Kendall Wallace, the chairman of the board for the Sun Newspaper. And Brian Martin, so many different titles, but his most recent title is Headmaster at Lowell High School, and also Marty Meehan, Chancellor at UMass Lowell. Without these four individuals, this particular partnership wouldn't exist. And at this particular time, I'd like to hand the floor over to Kendall Wallace, so that he could talk about the particular partnership, how important it is, and also the impact that it might have or will have on our school system and our city. Mr. Wallace?
Thanks for the opportunity to update the Subcommittee on Partnerships and the committee as a whole on what has become known as Project Learn. Thanks also for the support we have received from the school committee and the school administration in putting together this program. All of us hope this program will enhance your opportunities to continue to grow and improve Lowell Public Schools. It has been a long journey to get there. I think we sat here almost two years ago with an initial discussion of that. But I fear we have now created a model program that can serve the school department and the entire community for years to come. We particularly want to thank the Subcommittee Chairman Dave Conway and Committee Woman Connie Martin, who sat through many of the planning meetings early and offered some great suggestions to us. Since those planning meetings, we have a raised nearly $300,000 in private donations to support the program, found an outstanding candidate for the grant writer development director position, created a nine-person advisory board with four additional ex-official members, strengthened our partnerships with UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, and the Greater Lowell Community Foundation and Lowell Plan. We've become a Subcommittee of the Community Foundation, and the foundation is helping us with our finances and working with us to fully fund the project for the next three years, after which, we all hope, it can be self-sustaining and remain an important partner with Lowell Public Schools for many years to come. I can assure you, the people in the business community are very excited about what can be and appreciate the opportunity to work with Lowell Public Schools. The advisory board held its first public meeting last week. The membership includes Ken Wallace, Nancy Donahue, Chancellor Marty Meehan, who will have agreed to serve on a one-year term to prove that no good deed goes unpunished. I got elected chairman. The two-year members are President Carol Cowan, Louis Pedrosa, who will be our treasurer, and George Duncan. And the three-year members are Michael Gallagher, John Haley, and Annalisa Saab. The ex-official members include the Mayor of the City of Lowell, the Superintendent of Lowell Public Schools, the Headmaster of the high school, and the Chairman, Executive Director of the Community Foundation. As you indicated earlier, Mr. Conway, a lot of this wouldn't happen, not only the people you outlined, but there were a lot of others who played a very important role in this, particularly the foundation stepping up to set us up as a private nonprofit organization without going through a lot of paperwork, lots of help from the Lowell Plan in raising some money, and lots of good citizens who have given their financial support. None of the people who have donated to the project seek any recognition, but they're the people who are always there for anything positive for the city of Lowell. And some of those donors include the Enterprise Bank, the Trinity EMS, Lowell Sun Charities, the Lowell Five, the Donahue Foundation, the Parker Foundation, Watermark, Gallagher and Kavanaugh, Louis Pedrosa personally, Jack Clancy personally, George and Carol Duncan, Yocana Photos, Eastern Bank, Sage Bank, and Lowell General Hospital. We haven't completed our fundraising, but we are at a point that we're all comfortable. And with the support of the foundation, we have no doubt we will get to that point. Finally, it is my pleasure to introduce Susan Lynn, the young lady who has accepted the position and has been working here since August 1. I was hoping George Duncan could be here to introduce Susan. George chaired the search committee and was quite excited with the interview and Susan. She was the unanimous recommendation of the Subcommittee on Personell. She comes to us from Newton Public Schools. I thought we were the only smart ones who thought a privately funded grant writer, development director for public schools was an original idea. It seems Susan has been doing this in Newton under a very similar structure with a private foundation for many years. She's already working on a number of proposals, but can tell you a lot of what has happened since she first arrived. So let me introduce Susan Lynn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and distinguished guests. First, I want to say that Kendall Wallace is my new favorite person for calling me "the young lady." Other than that, I want to tell you how happy I am to be here. It's really an honor. I've been in Lowell now for about six weeks, and I have learned so much about the city and what makes it work, which has been my first priority. And one of the things I've been inspired by are the number of people here who are willing to not only go the extra mile, but the extra legions of miles to make it work for Lowell Public School students in particular. The Learn Committee is obviously a great example of that. But everywhere I turn, heads of nonprofits, school district leaders, all of you, you're just, you know, you're all in to make it a better place for Lowell kids. And it's really already a very exceptional place. I'm very honored to be here. So as I mentioned, in my first six weeks, my goal has been to understand how Lowell works, understand what the key priorities are. I have put together preliminary grants calendar, which I shared with many of you. The main goal right now was to ensure that we weren't missing any opportunities, so opportunities that are from the Mass Department of Education or the U.S. Department of Education in particular, upcoming deadlines, so what we know exists. The next phase, which I'm already entering into, is creating a strategic grant-seeking and development plan that includes thinking more about what are the big projects that Lowell could do if they had a grand or diversified funding plan to make things better here in Lowell. To that end, I started putting the pieces together to create strategic partnerships that will benefit Lowell Public School students with places like the national parks, the U.S. Army, local nonprofits, funding sources, et cetera. So let me stop there and ask what you want to know.
Any questions? And first of all, I want to congratulate you on this particular position. And also, I want to welcome you to Lowell. And when I talked with individuals that interviewed candidates, they were so extremely impressed with your qualifications and your knowledge base, your experience, and your success. And the individuals that did interview you were individuals that I have tremendous, and we all have tremendous, respect for. We picked the best to be at that table to make those interviews. And again, I want to congratulate you and welcome to Lowell. And I think you're going to have a great time here.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward to it. I'd like to open this up to any comments at all.
I just wanted to introduce Steve Jankas. He's the chairman of the Community Council.
Of the Greater Lowell Community Foundation, Steve Jankas. And I thank you for being here too. Steve, would you like to come up and say a few words, please?
Well, it's my privilege to serve on the board of the Community Foundation as their president for the last three years. Has something to do with my father-in-law's ability to twist arms. That's a joke, by the way. In any case, it really is a privilege to serve on the board. And as you know, the Community Foundation has a real stake in education because of the work that so many have done in order to create the many endowments that we manage that provide scholarships to Lowell High School graduates. Right now, we manage about $22 to $23 million worth of endowed funds. Some of those are field-of-interest funds, others are donor-advised funds. But a good chunk of that, some 15%, 3.5, 3.6 million, is really allocated towards the scholarships. And those represent about 167 endowed funds. So when we were approached by Kendall and George and others, yourself, Dave, about how the foundation could play a role, there was real enthusiasm amongst the board members about participating in this, because they really see the value of partnerships, and they see the value of creative approaches to problem-solving, and more importantly, creative approaches to taking advantage of educational opportunities. It's clear to everyone on our board that education is really key to the city's success, probably the most integral component of the city's future, and certainly students' future. So we're very pleased to play the part of fiscal agent. You know, it's an interesting challenge, asking people for money to support various causes. But certainly, there's been a great deal of enthusiasm about this effort and because of the great promise that it holds, I think, for the future. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but we're really and very enthusiastic about it and pleased to be here.
Thank you very much, Steve. We really appreciate that. And once again, as you said, the tremendous partnership, it's putting the right people at the table, making it work. And one of those individuals that, again, we lean on quite often in this city and has had so many different hats is now Headmaster at Lowell High School. He's back where he graduated from. Brian Martin, could you speak on this particular partnership?
Thank you very much, Mr. Conway, and thank you for your efforts on this. You've been a real leader. And at many of the initial meetings that you were there with the superintendent, Connie Martin, and others that have supported this, it's been kind of a fun project, because if you've been around a long time, not as long as Kendall Wallace or George Duncan, but I'm getting to be like a close second.
Thank you for adding that in.
I took you out of that. There's been so many initiatives in the city that you get involved with, and because of the people who become totally engaged in the issue, you know it's a winner from the start. But our friend Paul Songus was one who never really worried about the money. He would always think that the initiative will get you the money. And quite frankly, I think Kendall and George provided the leadership on this issue to convince all of the partners, as we went from business to business, to individual to individual, to tell the story of why we think this is a critical piece of taking the Lowell Public Schools to another level. It was an easy sell. And most of these businesses have all committed to a three-year cycle of funds. I think that we've demonstrated by hiring a really quality, first-class candidate that brings a fabulous record with her, Susan Lynn, to the table. And as you see, the partnerships with the Community Foundation and UMass Lowell and all of the great contributors, that we have a winning combination here. And I do think that going forward, this will be one of those historic moments. It's like, looking back at the city, there's been a number of those along the way. And I think George Duncan and Ken Wallace really deserve tremendous credit for leaning and not giving up. And I sat through all of the meetings when we were asking for support. And I watched them, and I watched the passion they brought to this project. And I'm really looking forward to this benefiting the entire public schools. Susan's been at the school a number of times, meeting with some of our staff, has been fabulous, helping with suggestions on grants already. And I see nothing but good fortune for the school, so congratulations to everyone.
I thank you, Mr. Martin. And, you know, once again, we talk about, you know, you can have a good idea and bring it forward, but unless you have the people that can carry it through, it's quite often will fall by the wayside. I think that, you know, back about three or four years ago, when I had this idea and I brought it forward, I talked to, and I wanted to save her for last year, I talked to Connie Martin a number of times. You know, plenty of times I've called her on the phone, and I think she knew exactly what the telephone call was going to be about. Another question of, what do you think about this, and how are we going to do that? And I think that I was very, very fortunate to have Connie Martin with this project and with this partnership, because, again, I think she tried, I think that what she did was, she took this idea and, again, brought it to another level. And I want to publicly thank her for that, because, again, it was a combination of a lot of different people working together for this common goal. And, again, I think that Ms. Martin deserves a lot of credit, and I thank you very much. I'd like you to speak on this partnership, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I can honestly say that I never really know why you're calling me. No matter what the topic may be, it's always a surprise. You know, I think one of the things that I've been struck by, and I know I'm certainly not alone in this, you know, the partnerships and the work that people do in this city to better it, to invest in our futures, our collective future, has been inspirational for decades. And we're amazingly lucky in that sense. And I think in many cases, we tend to take it for granted. When we talk about the individuals who are part of this effort, and they are many, you know, we can cast them as the usual suspects, but the reality is, is that that is an amazingly unique feature, for a city to have a group of individuals who they can count on for the big investments, for the big changes. I agree with Mr. Martin, that I do think that this will be a historic move. This is an opportunity for our district to think in truly visionary and aspirational ways. We spend a great deal of time talking nuts and bolts. We talk, you know, about bubblers and budget debates over paperclips and iPads and sometimes even soccer balls. We've had a lot of conversations about things that are, while, you know, important to education, can, you know, drift towards the mundane sometimes. And they are what get us through our day. They are what allow us to do the work we do. But to have an opportunity to think about our district, to think about our city, and most importantly, to think about our students in creative, visionary ways, I think is going to be a watershed moment for our district as well. And it's the way we should be thinking. We are all proud residents of a city where our students deserve that and where we recognize it. And that the investments that have been made in this specific effort, I think we're going to be seeing bearing fruit for many, many years to come. And that fruit really will be in the success and the good works that we expect to see from our many graduates here in the city of Lowell. They deserve nothing less than that, and it's certainly our job to ensure that they get it. So certainly, having this group of people come together to make this happen is inspirational for all of us and puts, you know, puts the pressure on all of us to ensure that we are using this resource effectively and making sure that our students really do bear the benefit of this, because ultimately, that is to all of our credit and, more importantly, to all of our civic good. Thank you. It's been wonderful to be a part of it, I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank all of our partners, and you've done a terrific job in pulling this together. I recognize that it takes a long time planning and also alleviating people of their funds and to fund this initiative. So the one question I did have, and I'm asking this only because I've not been privy to many of the planning conversations and many of the meetings that have been held offline and not necessarily in Subcommittee, the question I have is, is the primary intent of our development person to initiate fundraising for just our high school, or is it for the entire district? And with that, I want to finish by congratulating Ms. Lynn on her appointment. We welcome you and good luck, and we expect great things from you.
Who would like to answer that? Madam Superintendent? Is it turned on?
I hope so. The long-term goals of this is that it is a pre-K-12 initiative. And what Ms. Lynn is, she's wrapping her head around the entire district and all the moving parts, and she's doing quite an admirable job, but looking at where, in fact, the goals of the districts are and what can add to the outcomes for young people in many different ways. And so, beginning, there is some work that's being done at Lowell High School, but there's also other work that's being done at all levels of the organization. A focal point, and this was the true originator, for the funding sources that a school district can never have the time to aspire to write to, large federal grants, which are incredible projects, private foundations, where we, as an organization, have millions of dollars in grant funding that is our endowment-type funding, but for beyond that. So we don't have, historically, Gates Foundation money or Ford Foundation money, other, many, many different initiatives that are out there, just because we don't have that core. So these initiatives, to be guided by Susan Lynn with the assistance of many others in district and in the community, is the goal. So some beginning works at Lowell High School and other places, but it is for all levels of the organization, with strategic planning on what makes sense to go after. So that's the goal of the whole program. And I, Mr. Conway, if okay, would like to take just a moment to thank everybody here at this table, all the planning, all the people who've been involved in this. I was superintendent for a few weeks when people came forward and said, what would be the most helpful long-term? And we were very, very serious as a core group, many of whom are here and others, Mr. Duncan especially, thinking, what would lead to the next steps for the school district? So we could ensure what children deserve and what they should have. And for that to be something that is a luxury for this superintendent and the superintendents to come is a phenomenal advantage. And it speaks, again, to what an amazing city this is, a city who believes in its youth. I say it all the time, but know that the youth is the cornerstone. And I am touched by the generosity of every single donor, but also the time that has been evolved in this group of people who are here and the school committee as a whole, who really dedicates their time to the young people of Lowell. So I just wanted to take that opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Thank you, Ms. Ross Sikewich, for the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Once again, I think that we all have, in the last few years, sat through many budget hearings that we had to make cuts. And each and every year, we were cutting programs that nobody wanted to cut. And every cut takes away from a child's education. I think this here is an opportunity that we will be able to, hopefully, be able to supplement some of our programs and be able to compete with, have our students compete with, should we say, wealthier-type communities. And again, I thank everyone for stepping up to the plate and helping out in this venture. If there is anything else to be said?
Just want to say, David, that it takes a school committee that is willing to let these things happen too. So we appreciate what you've done and allowed us to move forward with no involvement, no interference, to set up a program I think will benefit all of us for a very long time.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. To have a motion to accept as a report of progress by Ms. Kristin Ross Sikewich, second by Ms. Martin, all in. Martin, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Uh, motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Kristin Ross Sikewich, all in favor, all opposed, so adjourned. Thank you.